Calling council to order, silence your phones and let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Sherrick.
Here.
Spiegel.
Here.
And Young.
Here. Okay, before we get started, if we have anybody who wants to approach the podium to speak, we will hold it to a three-minute presentation for each person. So if you do speak, try to be, get to the point that you need to. I'm going to open the floor to the letter from the mayor.
Council members, you have received letters from Safety Service Director Wagner and I, as well as Law Director Brian Gurnett responding to the questions that have come up regarding the change in minimum staffing at the fire department. We reiterate that the current staffing of six will stay in place unless a firefighter is scheduled off. When a firefighter is scheduled off, there will still be five firefighters on duty. Chief Schwimley has the ability to schedule time off. This is a budgetary issue. We are quickly running out of cash and are on a financial precipice. I alerted this issue to you one year ago, and you did not act upon my concerns. Auditor Schiffer lamented your lack of action before leaving office. It was made more acute when several of you voted to accept the ruling of the fact-finding decision, which caused us to add $300,000 to the fire department budget for 2023, not including the $300,000 in payback that was recently paid out. I will be leaving office at the end of the year, and I have warned that the city of Bucyrus is heading toward fiscal emergency. We are taking steps to save as much cash as possible, and the best way we can do, we can save funds is to reduce overtime in the fire department, which was $400,000 in 2022. It is expected to be $450,000 in 2023. We have already spent $45,000 on overtime in the first three pay periods of 2023. Keep in mind that the total funds available for safety forces in tax revenue is about $4,500,000. So fire department overtime is a significant cost. There are several options available. First, council can eliminate the tax credit immediately. Second, we can ask the fire department union to reduce or eliminate some of the time off that is received, such as Kelly days and sick time. Or third, explore the option of hiring paramedics or part-time firefighters, paramedics at a significant reduction in cost. Difficult times are challenging and require all of us to work together and think creatively. I ask that you explore solutions with us to ensure excellent coverage for our citizens while making the best use of tax dollars. Sincerely, Jeff Reiser, Mayor.
Kevin, you asked to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Monday, February 13th, 2023, Bucyrus Fire Department Chief Schwimley was presented a letter from Safety Service Director Jeff Wagner and Mayor Jeff Reiser notifying him that effective the following Monday, February 20th, 2023, that the minimum staffing for the daily shifts at the fire department would drop from six to four. Little history lesson here, Mayor Reiser gave a proposal back in 2018 to leave the Central Joint Ambulance District and take on EMS by ourselves within our fire department. Unfortunately, his plan did not address the increased staffing that would be required and was subsequently not approved by council at that time. However, knowing that we all still had that common goal in sight, shortly thereafter, Mayor Reiser, Service Director Wagner, Chief Schwimley, former Law Director Rob Ratliff and myself started working together on a plan that would bring EMS into our fire department. Dr. William Kramer was brought in to provide his expertise and was paid $15,000 to perform a study. That study told us what our staffing levels needed to be to adequately provide fire and EMS services within our community. Using all of this information, we came to a decision in an agreement that six per shift, maintaining six, was the proper number that took into account the affordability as well as our true staffing needs. I also point out that every year for the past 20 years plus, the number of EMS calls within this community has continued to increase and is projected to continue doing so. With the recent directive that we were going to reduce the minimum staffing from six to four, we've been told that, quote, "This doesn't mean that there will only be four on staff at all times, but only during the time when two people are off," end quote. Per Chief Schwimley, in 2022, 90% of the time, there were positions that were backfilled with overtime because of sick time, personal time, vacation time, or comp time. Further, this move is being done to, quote, "save about half of the $450,000 in overtime costs that are projected for the fire department in 2023," end quote. I'll note, too, that we have, what I believe the last meeting we had was about $292,000 still sitting in the ARPA funds line. So if the concern there was saving $200,000 in overtime, that's a legal use of that money. Let me point out the following financial information. The contract with the Crawford County West Joint Ambulance District brings into the city about $175,907. Our 2022 EMS billing revenue was $470,264.29. And then the savings on not paying a subsidy to the former Central Joint Ambulance District was at least $150,000. So when we combine those three numbers, we're looking at a total of about $796,171.29. That's increased revenue that was not previously realized prior to taking on EMS. We were cautioned that GE closing would cost us upwards of $300,000 in tax revenue annually. However, we were told that there was an increase in January, but that was attributed to two payments from Savant. Well, even if you remove the second payment, we're still at an increase, not the $25,000 decrease that we were told to expect with the closing of GE. Now, there's two reasons that I cite for this. One are that people are in fact still working locally after the closing of GE. And secondly, people everywhere are receiving higher wages due to inflation. We made an agreement with the Crawford County West Joint Ambulance District to provide EMS to the four townships of Holmes, Lichens, Dallas, and Bucyrus. In paragraph three of that contract, it stipulates that they are to receive a 30-day notice if there are material changes of services that are planned or will occur. I believe that the reduction in manpower that has been proposed is a material change that is deserving of a 30-day notice. In calendar year 2022, we had three firefighters who worked over 4,000 hours each. Now, that's equivalent to two full-time jobs almost. We cannot keep working our public safety employees to this extent. The solution to cutting overtime would be to increase our staffing, not to reduce it. In closing, I wanted to ask the administration, after hearing the outcry of our constituents and those that we took an oath to protect and serve, if they are willing to rescind this policy of minimum staffing. After being delivered a copy of the letter last Monday, I asked Law Director Gurnett to draft emergency legislation that would remove the authority from the Safety Service Director to cut the staffing and grant that authority into the hands of council legislatively. This evening, I plan to ask my fellow council members to join me in discussing and passing this legislation that will protect the health, safety, and welfare of our community members. While there is argument whether we as a council have such authority, I cite the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, who in 2016 did just that, legislating the minimum staffing levels of their fire department. This city needs and deserves true leaders. I believe that our council, the administration, and the chiefs could and should be working together on these issues and being leaders, not pitting themselves against one another.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will give you the floor back.
Jeremy Gillum, President of Bucyrus Firefighters, IFF Local 1120. I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. Unfortunately, the two that need to hear this are not in attendance. I don't stand here in front of you as just a voice of reason for the members of the city of Bucyrus Fire Department, but also as an advocate for the citizens of Bucyrus and the residents we provide EMS coverage to in the townships. The administration's choice to cut and reduce daily staffing to four is detrimental to the lifesaving service we provide as a fire and EMS department. Prior to the city taking over EMS, there were between nine and 11 firefighters and EMS providers in the city at any given time between the fire department and the private EMS service. When the city paid for an EMS study by Bill Kramer, that finalized study stated a daily staffing level of eight was optimal, a staffing level of seven was ideal, and a staffing level of six was bare minimum. Now, the administration is cutting us to four. The administration believes they are hurting the chief and the members of this department by reducing our staffing. In all honesty, it is the citizens they were elected to protect who are affected. Those calling 911 requesting EMS for assistance because they are entrapped in a vehicle involved in a crash, those with difficulty breathing, the heart attacks, the overdoses, the elderly calling for help after a hard fall. It's going to be those who are awakened by the smell of smoke only to find their houses on fire as they stand on the curb watching things that they have worked for their entire life burn, hoping to hear the sounds of sirens or see a fire truck rounding the corner. It is going to affect those citizens. Not only did the fire department take an oath to protect this city, but also these elected officials promised the same. This cut reduction of staffing by the administration shows firsthand that parks, trees, water parks, and other legacy projects are more important than the lives and safety of the citizens and visitors of the city. We need the support of council and of the public on getting our staffing back to, as the study suggested, the bare minimum of six. We as the fire department are asking only for the minimum. This is still a strain on the members of this department and of their families, but we cannot provide the service expected of our daily staffing as cut to four. I thank you all for your time and once again seek your support on this matter. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you for the time. I know Brian a little bit. I've met him in negotiations. I'm Roy Hollenbacher. I'm a state rep for the International Association of Firefighters, and I'm the district vice president for the Ohio Firefighters. I represent 38 locals in northwest Ohio, and Bucyrus Local 1120 is one of them. And I think I go back as far as when Dallas Easter Day was a fire chief and Dan Ross, and I've been involved here a lot of times. I've been right there at that table for negotiations a lot of times. And I think the mayor was a little critical of council when he's, I guess I'll say, basically gave you hell for passing the fact-finder's report, accepting the fact-finder's report. But I'll go back to when we were at the table and the firefighters made an offer, settlement offer, that the city should have taken. It would have saved you a lot of money. But the mayor said no. So we went through the impasse procedure that the State Employment Relations Board has developed, and that's how you got your fact-finder's report. So I don't want him to be critical of council when we could have settled right there at that table and Brian was there. But I do want to commend the fire department. I think they were part of initiating EMS service in Bucyrus. You have the best fire-based EMS service that you can get. Kind of like when Lamar Hamblin fell out on the football field in Cincinnati. You've got that same service right here. And you can only do it with people. You can have all the ALS medic units at the station you need or the ALS engines, but you've got to have people to operate them. And I commend you for having this special meeting tonight and considering legislation that will put the people in the station. So that's about all I can tell you. You've got a good department, you've got good people, and a good city, and they deserve the protection these guys give them. Thank you.
Good evening, Chief Schwimley, Bucyrus Fire Department. I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. The show of support is greatly appreciated. My, I changed my initial, thanks. Changed my initial reading of what was, I was going to have, and due to the mayor and service director not being here, and I've got a scheduled meeting on Monday, I'll have that talk with them at that time. It's been said that the, this reduction of staffing is not, like I said, not, it's not going to impact us that much. 90%, like I said, 90% of the time, it does. The other 40% of the time is still at five. But that's not, that's not what it helps. It's one of those, I said in the, when I was interviewed the other day, that, you know, we need to schedule our emergencies, which we know that doesn't happen. The undue stress that this will be putting on my guys is not acceptable, and I can't blame somebody for wanting to try to look for a job someplace else. My first response to the mayor and service director when they told them this, I said, "You're destroying my department." Right now, Delaware City has posted for 30 jobs to hire within the next three years. They start out $28 an hour and only work 20, two days a week. My guys are working way more than that, but they enjoy being here and they enjoy the community that they serve. You know, it's, I know the police department's having a tough time keeping people here, and it's, you know, all it's going to do is, a reduction is going to cause us to be in the same boat. So I, like, again, I thank you for what you're, what we're trying to do. Hopefully, this, this works and we can, we can make a change and so we can continue to serve the people that we enjoy serving. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anybody else? Chief?
My name is Lieutenant McNutt, Eric McNutt. I'm in, next month will be 23 years with the fire department. Everybody always talks about providing the coverage for the city. The townships were in contract for the EMS. I'd also like to remind the council members that we also provide mutual aid contract with townships on the east side, which include, like Liberty and Westone, which Westone actually has Timken, which we have mutual automatic mutual aid, the urgent care centers in Westone Township. So there's more than just the city and the west side of the state. We also provide services to you at the east side that we are under contract with. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Kurt Van Khouser, 616 Prospect Street. Is it, you do have legislation ready?
I do.
I support that legislation for the minimum staffing levels. Just be prepared, anything passed by council, the mayor would have to sign it. He could veto it, which would mean you have a time period that has elapsed before you can reconvene and override a veto. So be prepared to do that if you're going to pass legislation. Also, I, I was a part of that discussion with Kramer and Associates, and the six was the bare minimum level for especially covering multiple townships in addition to the city. I would, I don't know why the cut is, they say the money's not there, but the EMS revenue is actually bringing in more than we anticipated when the study was done, so.
I believe we budgeted around $250 to $300, if I remember right, is what we were.
And just, and one more thing, you know, if, if you're trying to get other areas to annex into the city, and they see that you can't even provide the level of staffing that you need for the city, let alone if you annex more, how, why would anybody want to annex?
Anybody else?
Mark? When we spoke several months ago, and they were mentioning the amount that we were spending in overtime, and I said, "So why aren't we hiring in new people?" And I was informed by at least one person in the administration that I didn't know what I was talking about, and it would cost so much more money. But now that was one of the things that he even offered, but he jumped to this first rather than coming to us and saying, "Hey, what can we do to make, to make this work? That's, that's hurting our city. It, we can't, we can't hurt the citizens because of the money. We have to figure out how to make the money work." So just saying.
I think the absence of our mayor and our safety service director speaks volumes about how they feel about all the citizens in Bucyrus.
Anybody else?
I actually considered not speaking, just because I feel like the room, this might maybe not be right. But I wanted to say, I've been here for.
What's your name?
Oh, Michael Zabala, I'm sorry. Mike, Michael Zabala. I've been in this community almost exactly two years. I am the target I believe that Bucyrus is trying to attract. I have a good job. I worked down at Columbus. I researched the history after I bought my house. I was excited about this community. Things like this are pushing me out. I'm looking, I'm thinking about selling my house, right? And, you know, I want to know everything that has been investigated to try to do. This is all about money. This isn't about, you know, cutting staffing, I mean, that plays, that all plays into the budget. I find it really interesting that last year, the mayor wanted to reduce the credit to fund parks downtown, and now all of a sudden, safety is shorted? Why? That doesn't make sense to me. Can anybody explain that?
We can't answer for the administration.
All right, that's fair.
That's why we're here tonight.
That's fair, that's fair. And it's like, I want to know what other things have been investigated, right? I don't, I don't, I just, I completely disagree with the three things that are proposed in the, in there. What about increasing permit fees for, you know, public events? Safety is being provided there. What about increasing, you know, and you kind of referenced increasing or changing the agreements with the other townships? I mean, has that been investigated? What about, you know, adding a volunteer section to it? I mean, I'm not an expert. These gentlemen back here are the experts. They know what they can do or can't do as far as that stuff goes. I'm just curious if it's been investigated, you know? And the other, at the other night, there was, you know, when you all were talking about setting up a campaign and for, for this, you know, levy to pass, that you want to be transparent with the people, okay? You know, what, what other things have been done? What are the things can be cut? That's what I want to know. You know, it's like, last year, Wetstone and Beal was resurfaced. I didn't think it needed to be resurfaced. Who makes that decision? Where was the bid? Who got paid for that? How much is the budget for the transportation? From my understanding, it's like $2.3 million. Is that too much? That's all the transportation levy. Maybe instead of doing an increase in taxes, you transfer some of that money over to safety. I don't think that doing an additional levy and cutting the income tax is going to be good long-term for Bucyrus. You're going to push more people out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hey. I'm talking. All right. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Good evening. Tom Walker, former president of Bucyrus FOP Lodge 68, captain at the police department. As I look around the room, there's plenty of us here that have been around Bucyrus, around the public safety industry here for quite some time. So, and many of you obviously have been around the political arena for quite some time. In my 26 years with the police department and my involvement with the Fraternal Order of Police and working with my IFF friends, I can, I believe I'm speaking for them as well, when I say we have never had to be so politically active than we ever have right at this moment. Unfortunately, in the 26 years that I have been here, I have watched the soccer game going on in the political arena here, and public safety has always been the damn ball that's been kicked around. The public, the citizens, we're advocates for them. We are the professionals. We know what needs to be done. And it seems like we never have a voice, we never even have a seat at the table. And quite frankly, the community deserves better. And if this is a step in the right direction to make it happen, the Fraternal Order of Police will back the IFF fully. Thank you.
My name is Brian Schulp. I'm the president of the Crawford County West Joint Ambulance District. The Crawford County West Ambulance District was formed in the summer of '21, with the previous county-wide ambulance district dissolved. The ambulance district entered into contract with the city of Bucyrus for EMS coverage to be provided by the Bucyrus City Fire Department, using funds generated from a new EMS levy. The first year of the contract has gone extremely well. The district has benefited from prompt and professional service from the Bucyrus Fire Department, also experienced a high level of cooperation with our various township volunteers and first responders. The ambulance district has been closely monitoring recent developments regarding proposed fire department staffing changes. We have been in communication with city administration and council members expressing our concerns. Ambulance district recognizes issues, the city is over budget. I don't believe that's all from the ambulance district because they are making money. They, I think they're doing a good job, as well as concerns of staffing. The fire ambulance district just trusts that the administration and council can resolve this issue and expect that we will keep in receiving the same outstanding level of service from the fire department for the remainder of our contract. Thank you.
Anybody else? Dan?
Okay. I, I fully support the police department, fire department, and their locals. I just don't feel that, that city council should be legislating to the administration. And if the administration's doing a bad job, I guess, you know, we need to take that up with them. There's other ways to do that, but if we begin legislating, we'll legislate this. We tried to legislate the clerk's job a while back. That didn't go so smooth. This is not going to go smooth if we legislate what they have to do. Next, we'll legislate, you know, opening up the pool or doing this. We budgeted for six firefighters, right? Finance committee, that was my understanding. So I feel the administration is obligated to provide the city with the six firefighters. So other than that, I am against us legislating them to do that because it, it's just going to be a war if we start that. We've got a lame duck administration here that's just going to drag this city right down. And we're trying to get money for, for, just to bolster for a few, few years to get through these tough times. And I just don't see it as a good thing. So we'll do what we can do. But I think the, this should be a decision of the, I'm not saying it's right, but I think that's his decision, and I'm not going to agree with it, but, but I don't, I just don't think we should legislate because, you know, you can't legislate good behavior. And so I guess that's all I've got, so.
Mr. Wireball?
Yeah.
Four on duty, two ambulances out. We get a third call for a cardiac arrest. Who's, who's answering? It's the guys, we're answering that.
I understand that, but that's not our job. We were elected to make calls.
And it's our job to respond to emergencies in a timely manner. And without the proper tools and manpower to do so, we, we're the ones there. So, so instead of working a code or trying, trying to do our job, it's, it's going to be turned over to the corner, just so you're aware.
I understand that, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not for this. I'm just saying, you know, I'm just saying, we can't, we can't do it. I mean, I think you're, we're going to be in, the city itself is going to be in trouble if we do this. I think we need to persuade the administration, however, we need to do it. If we need to march out front, I don't know, but we need to persuade them to remain like, like it is, okay? That's all I'm saying. I'm just saying, I don't think this is the way we should do it.
I'm just saying, I don't think this is the way we should do it.
Lieutenant Barry Herschler, Bucyrus Fire Department. Just to make you aware of then, just so all of you know, you have an emergency at your place with your loved one. And we're out on runs, don't come yelling at us. We are not the people to come yelling at. We can only do what we can do with four people. Six people is working. And, Mr. Wireball, if you're saying that we can only do what you can do and we should do, well, then you should be doing it too for us at the end with the administration. Go talk to them. Explain to them. But I just want all of you to know, if your loved one is laying there and we, we are busy, it's not on us. Go to that corner office. Thanks.
Uh, my name is Greg White. I live at 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Um, I think you guys need to press on with this legislation. Um, I think you also don't look at the number of nursing home facilities that you have in your community, that if you reduce the number of manpower in the fire department, that it is going to be a big problem. In case you have a fire in one of these facilities and you have a squad out and you only have two guys back on the station, uh, the nearest metro aid is what, Crestline, Galleon? It's going to take a while for somebody to get there. So, I think you need to press on with this legislation, Mr. Myers. It needs to be voted on. If someone wants to vote no, let them vote no. But this legislation needs to be passed tonight. Thank you.
If I could make one more point, Mr. President. Chief, help me with these numbers. When we were, and Kurt, you might remember some of them too. When we sat down and planned on, you know, laying out this whole plan, uh, the, the numbers that we used at the time, I think the most recent numbers I had were 2015 or 2016 numbers. And if I remember correctly, how many times, just within the city limits, not including the rest of the townships, and within the city limits, I believe the number was 121 times in that calendar year. There were three ambulance, there were three ambulances needed at one time. Thirty-four times, there were four ambulances needed at one time. And one time that year, there were five ambulances needed at one time. So, 121, 34, and 1 were the times it would take us above the minimum amount of four, you can only send two ambulances out. Those numbers sound, but I, I, I really think those are the correct numbers.
Yeah, that's, those are pretty close and accurate. It was one of those, the, uh, just to go on numbers, we were just shy of, and I think they were published in the one article. We were just shy of 2,900 runs for the year. We had, um, 20% of the time of those 2,900 runs, there were two runs going on at the same time. Another, another note on that is, is that we can't handle, two guys can't handle all those calls by themselves. A thousand times, we had an additional vehicle on that first call, or, or whatever the, the call was going on, that it needed additional help. That number's not in those 2,900 calls. That's in the almost 3,900 responses that we had. So, you know, you, you, you can't, you can't rely on callback or from guys responding in off-duty to back up your on-duty crews. It's one of those, we have a great working relationship with Galleon, the PD, the, the, the townships that we serve. They've, they've filled that role of being the volunteers for us. They fill that role. And we've, we've asked more of, more of Holmes Township than what they ever have. They are actually all doing more runs than they ever have. They're working amongst each other, with themselves to come aid us when we're in their, when we're in their townships. And then they also come into the city and help us in time of need. But it's 15 to 20 minutes to get a second piece of apparatus out that is from a callback situation. So whether or not you're relying upon Galleon, Crestline, Holmes Township, wherever it comes from, or even, you know, even our own. If it's relying on off-duty people that are not at the station, it's 15 to 20 minutes.
I'll follow up to two points, too. Um, off those 2015 numbers that we, we worked off of, the, the run volume for that year, I believe was 2,400. So, and you're saying this last year we were 2,900. So, you know, substantial increase.
It just keeps going up.
The other, the other question I wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of, I didn't bring the copy of, of the letter that you presented last Monday, but could you just share with everybody what the last sentence of that letter said? Who are you supposed to reach out to when you need help, when you're down those two guys?
Um, the PD, and it's one of those, we have a great working relationship with the police department, but there are several calls that we go on already that they're understaffed. They don't, I don't understand how, being understaffed, that they can help us do our job. We're not, we're not police officers and they're not, they're not EMTs and, and medics. They may be able to help in certain situations, but there's, there's numerous times where we want them on a scene and they can't come. They're already, they're, they're already overtaxed as it is. So.
Chief? Are you going to address the, uh, STEMI's out of the hospital? The emergency transports out of the hospital?
And those are one of the other things that we, that we do. I thought the, the, the representatives from the hospital are here. Last year, we had, I think, believe, 38 transports to Galleon Hospital because of a service that is not provided to not being able to be provided at the Bucyrus Hospital. It's over to Galleon Hospital.
For the general public, chief, what, what is a STEMI and what's the service that's not provided here that's provided there? I think people that are watching at home might want to understand that.
So that's more or less was for their cath lab. So, um, I wanted, it was, I'd actually rather have one of my medics do it more, that they actually, uh, they know the full thing of what's going on. Go ahead and-
Basically, we get called, um, from the hospital. We do emergency transports from Bucyrus Hospital to the city of Galleon Hospital, um, like chief stated, to, for the cath lab. These are for STEMI's, um, ST elevation, you know, heart attacks. So, um, it, it takes two medics in the back of the rig, um, and also a driver. So, anytime we, we do one of these emergency transports, it's taking three of us off shift immediately out of the, out of the, out of the city, out of the coverage area. Um, a quick turnaround, times an hour. Um, we're, we're taking these people straight into the hospital. We let them bypass in the ER, going straight into the cath lab. Move them off our cot, um, onto the cath lab so they can start the procedure. Um, and this is a, um, urgent lifesaving procedure, um, with, without, with any type of delay at the Bucyrus Hospital. If we're out on another call and it's delayed, um, a lot of times they, they call flight. That's how urgent this is. So, um, these people are either going by us emergency status to Galleon or by helicopter.
And we did that 39 times last year, you said?
You, yeah, right around 38, 39, yes.
My name is Rock Bess here. I'm from Vita Health Systems. I'm director of education training center. I'm also a paramedic and a registered nurse. I can tell you just, just numbers that Bucyrus Fire Department has taken active ST elevation myocardial impartsions from our hospital to Galleon's cath lab for intervention, which is the only thing that's going to save their life when they're in that situation. Ten to 12 times last year. So to put that into perspective for you, if anyone here that has a heart attack that doesn't get picked up immediately by EMS and go directly to the hospital, let's say your family member takes you to the hospital and you walk in, you're found to be having a heart attack. For every half hour that you don't have intervention, your mortality rate goes up seven and a half percent. So, if we don't have the fire department to provide EMS shuttle for us to the cath lab in Galleon, our closest is probably coming from Mansfield for this transport, which is an hour. So that would put an increased mortality rate of 15% for every MI that walks into our hospital. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. You know, I know guys are pissed at me, but I, I mean, what, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that we can, we'll go ahead and pass this, and then he's going to veto it, and then we're going to go through this, and then there'll be a legal challenge. And I would like to hear from the law director before we do any of this.
Dan, the, the only thing I'm saying with you wanting to put this off-
I'm not saying I want to put it off.
Look at all these guys. We're on a job. Seconds matter, and you're wanting to save days.
I'm not saying I want to put it off. I'm saying I don't think this is going to work, okay? So, have a backup plan, okay?
Uh, I am, uh, Zion Hickman of 849 South Sandusky Avenue. I completely support this legislative move that, uh, Myers is presenting because we've had countless times where the mayor and the administration has completely abandoned all complete opinion of this, of the people. We have been countless times, they are not here for responsibility. So, that tells everyone right now that they don't really care. We can try to talk to them all we want and see where it goes. I'm going to say it's going to go nowhere. But I, I will take into consideration what Dan is saying. We might be inciting a war with the administration if we do this. But at the same time, if we don't do this, we're going to keep seeing issues with our EMS and our response times. Something has to be done. We can't just keep sitting here and waiting for them to have an answer for everything. We have to provide that answer. If we have to force it, so be it.
Wes LeGrand, I'm the Secretary of Treasury, Local 3417. I think I can offer a little bit of a unique perspective. They went over well, it'll happen Monday. But I can offer you a glimpse of the future. Uh, the administration talked about part-time. That's not the answer. The part-timers aren't out there. And what you do, get, are going to get a reduced level service of what you guys are getting now. You guys are getting top-level, six top-level guys, firefighter, paramedics every day. But also, if you let any of them leave, my department just lost four, you're not going to find them. We're, we can't hire. We're, we're running short every day. If you let any, if you do anything, let these guys leave. These guys are dedicated to Bucyrus. They like it here, they want to be here. If you give them a reason to leave, you're not going to be able to replace them. Finding a two, a, a professional, a level-two paramedic is almost impossible. And it's happening in Columbus everywhere. But when you're talking about Delaware, chief, was exactly right. It's, trust me, every single firefighter in the state of Ohio has seen that post because they max out at 91,000, by the way. And they're ironing 30. So, and, and we're dealing with it, again, in my department where if you've got a 25-year-old guy that I want to get to my department, I can't offer 91,000, but you, you got to offer him what you can. And if you, with the run volume you guys are doing at, at four or under six, and six is still crazy, but under six, you're going to wear these guys out and they're going to find any reason. Now it doesn't even take 91,000. It takes six guys. So they don't even need big money. Now they just need, how do you get a break? You know, I don't have to ride the medic today. I can, I can take one day off. These guys are working every day, running high volume calls. There's a reason that you have contracted on the west side. There's a reason life first created on the, on the east side. Or on the west, yeah, east side. Because there's no volunteers out there, this is a lot to ask of people. When you used to go to ALS care, which is what you want, Bucyrus deserves ALS care. It's a high level, and it's a high expectation. It's a lot of training and continuing education. You've got a bunch of, good bunch of group of guys. If you can do anything within your power, legally, you need to keep them.
So I'll keep this brief, but in 2013, we had a house fire. And our fire department acted very prompt and, uh, saved the life of me, my wife, and our, our young daughter off the roof. Um, so if there's any time that I'm going to go to war for anybody, it's going to be these guys. And I hope that you-
Is there anybody else?
Officer Devon Mireman, Bucyrus Police Department. Um, I don't think anybody's upset with you all here. Um, I do know that I run calls with these guys every single day. Um, not only my incident, did two squads show up in a fire truck. If I would have been shot that day, I would have needed one, the suspect would have needed one. Um, if anybody else in the city would have needed a squad at that time, there'd be nobody to answer the call. Um, they're severely understaffed. We're severely understaffed. Um, we're pulling guns off the street every single day. Uh, people don't fight anymore with their fists. They pull a gun and shoot somebody. Um, and they're going to need a squad to show up for that as well. I don't think that we're trying to go to war with the mayor, the safety service director, per se, but I believe there's a line that's been drawn in the sand. They keep erasing it and pushing forward to the point where we're not going to have anybody that wants to work here or live here. Thank you.
14th and 19th. Mike Haster, 130 Brentwood Street. Ladies and gentlemen, you all know who I am. I've already talked to you before, and you guys already know what I have to say. For the ladies and gentlemen here, Mr. Wireball, you and I had a discussion last year. If you remember, I brought up about your cost of fuel and where your budget was headed. And I told you from the sheriff's office, we had been there and done that. You assured me that you were on top of things, that the city had it under control, that you knew where your budgets were, you were checking it every month and knew you had plenty of money. I told my wife when I went home, they're going to drive this to staring them in the face at the wall. You're at that wall. Four people on a fire department trying to handle this city and what township you took on, your police department with two officers and one dispatcher. This is ludicrous. I see a few familiar faces here. Remember the old years, Rocky? Ambulance calls out in the county where we abandoned our cruisers and drove the ambulance in so somebody could get to the hospital, keep from dying. Ladies and gentlemen and citizens of Bucyrus, nothing against this council, but something has got way out of kilter. You are now taking this jurisdiction back to the 1970s and early 80s. Absolutely no reason for it. And I'm going to tell everybody in this room and this council and the citizens, you go to this, people are probably going to die. Definitely get hurt bad. But most likely, you're going to die because of lack of service. I've had a couple people ask me, "Well, what's the chances of them getting two calls at once?" I said, "It's not a question of if it's going to happen, it's going to be when." My best example was a plane crash, Westone Street at the apartments one night. For those of you who weren't here, didn't go out, the fire department had a house fire call at the very same, same time we had an aircraft drop from, if I remember right, 10, 12,000 feet out of the sky into the parking lot of the apartments. It took virtually every man we could get scrambled to get out there and help. We don't have the men and men firemen anymore. We don't have the auxiliary for the police department anymore. You don't even have close to the manpower you used to have in the 70s and 80s. And look what we did back then. We made it through, but I'm going to sit here and tell this council, this is not going to make it through this time. There is too much added traffic, too many additional people, too many businesses. But I'm going to keep it simple like that. I know we have a levy coming up. I've already told you where I'm at with the levy. I've already talked to Mr. Myers regarding what I offered the other night. But ladies and gentlemen, it's time to get this thing going. Two months from now, we've got an election coming up. I really, truthfully, personally, do not think that this city's going to pull out if that levy doesn't pass. I really don't want to be in your shoes if it doesn't pass. And, Mr. Wireball, you've got the finance committee. God help your phone when the citizens start calling your house. I'm going to stand here, and I know my time's up, but I'm going to sit here and I hope we have the general citizens of the county, uh, city and the area, including the townships that this fire department handles. that this fire department handles. Get on the phone tomorrow, if our problem, which it appears to be from the letter I read, is with our mayor and service director, then make their phone ring off the hook for the next three to four days. That's all I have to say.
Mr. President?
I would like to make a motion to suspend the local rules of Section 111 of our codified ordinance and allow legislation to be presented from the floor without going through proper committee first.
I did ask for, I'm sorry, legal advice on this.
Yeah, so obviously council got my emails today, and I'm not an expert in public labor law or bargaining. The one concern I do have is when we went to fact-finding, minimum staffing was brought up. Obviously, you discussed minimum staffing, we put that in front of the fact-finder, and I didn't have time to read the fact-finder's report, but it's not in our contract. It was not awarded, they didn't make a ruling. And what you guys signed and what the administration signed, basically, an Article 6 kicks back management of the fire department back to the administration, which includes higher discharge transfers, suspending discipline of employees, determining enough number of persons required to be laid off, determining and determining the starting and quitting time, and number of hours worked by its employees, which is a contract that everybody negotiated in some faith, I don't know if it was good faith or not, but it was negotiated, it was agreed upon. And so, going back and trying to open up this by putting in the minimum staffing, which was left out of the union contract by the fact-finder, and I don't know, Roy's done this a heck of a lot longer than I have, but, and by council doing that, and counseling isn't the bargaining unit, the administration has a bargaining team, and you guys have your own bargaining team, seems to open us up to some sort of unfair labor practices issue. And so I'm not saying that this isn't something that we should do, I'm just saying that this may be an issue that we need to discuss and look at further, without opening the door and opening Pandora's box.
Well, you will not be putting it into their collective bargaining agreement, you won't be passing it as an ordinance.
You would pass it and be putting it into the revised code, or into the codified ordinance.
Right, you would be passing an ordinance.
Which will be termed, if there were litigation, as a end-around.
You might call it an end-around, but I...
You could say, right, but you could say that Seven Hills did this, and I don't know Seven Hills, I don't know Seven Hills' collective bargaining agreement, I don't have access to that, but the city of Cleveland, city council attempted to do this very same thing when the power was reserved through the charter to the administration, and they got shot down by the courts. I've spent, I think Kevin brought this up Monday afternoon or Tuesday, so I've spent literally 12 hours trying to figure out the legal ramifications and how this would have to happen, and if we do this, is there a possibility that we end up in court for the next six months fighting with the unions, which I don't wanna do, nobody wants to do. I mean...
Well, you won't have a fight, you won't have a fight from Local 1120, I'll guarantee.
No, if the administration sues the union based upon Unfair Labor Practices Act, there will be a free-for-all.
I think you're, I think you're going fishing, if you wanna know my opinion.
Oh, great.
It was a, when you do collective bargaining, both sides...
I spent my entire day fishing, right? I plan for the worst and hope for the best.
But when you... No. Because I'm gonna speak on collective bargaining. Both sides submit proposals for, and some you resolve, some you don't. And the fact-finder didn't rule on that specific article. Fact-finder can write any report he wants to write, and it can be rejected by either side.
Right, and if minimum staffing was an issue that the fire department wanted to hang their hat on, that would've been rejected by the fire department to put it in that contract, correct?
It can be put in a contract, it's a permissive subject of bargaining. It can be allowed. I mean, you know, we've submitted a proposal, the administration could've agreed to that proposal.
They could've.
But they chose not to.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that council can't pass an ordinance establishing minimum manning. You have an ordinance, I always call it a strength ordinance, how many people can be in each department? And Mr. Myers brought up a good point. Actually, you need to increase the manning on the fire department, period, not to, not minimum daily staffing. You need to have more firefighters.
Which could be done through the billet by council.
Well, yeah, you have to increase your strength ordinance, you'll have to have, have the ability to hire more people.
All I'm saying is that council has the ability to do certain things and the inability to do other things, and when council signed on this contract, they gave management rights to administration. Manning would be, staffing would be a management right. I think that you're setting yourself up for an issue. That's all I'm saying.
There are, there are management rights in every collective bargaining agreement, and establishing the number of people on the department is one, that's managerial right. But you need to get more people on the Bussiris Fire Department to maintain six on duty. You can't have six on each shift and have six required to be on duty every day. It's too much, it's too much, people can't work, you know, firefighters work 2,670 hours a year anyway, more than, more than a 40-hour employee, and then you can't expect them to work on their, you know, every day. It's just too much. So you need more firefighters to begin with, you need more police officers to begin with. But for your question, can you pass this ordinance tonight? In my opinion, you can. It has no effect on the collective bargaining agreement.
Right, but you just said, every contract has managerial rights.
It does.
And managerial rights include staffing, and then you continued to say, "But our real problem is the six, we need to put more," which would be a billet issue, which council could do.
Yeah, you're right. Council can do it.
If I could point out to both of you, though, that's not what I wanna bring up tonight, that's a whole fight for another day. Today, I am here, we are here, to keep our staffing at six.
Yeah, and I think you have the ability to do that through an ordinance.
But you just said we could change the number of manpower through the billet. We can change the number of manpower through, that was your words.
You can add to the billet.
And can't you also make a minimum as the manpower, like we cannot go below? That sounds like a billet issue. If you can add, you can also make...
Well, no, because currently, the police department has 19 employees in the billet, but we hired 16. I mean, the billet allows that, and so, the chief could hire additional officers or additional firefighters. I don't know, I mean, you guys, like I said, I think that there has been a very well argued and well pointed out, like, six is necessary, and you need multiple people on these calls. I don't know, I forget the number of three ambulance calls, but that's significant, the number of two ambulance calls is significant. I mean, these guys have come out and helped me at Woodbine with my guy, like, I don't know what else to do, so I called the fire department. I think that it's an important issue. I just, the backdrop of this isn't as cut and dry as council can just go about, you know, legislating from the bench. I mean, you can legislate, but you have to stay within the confines of what we've already passed. In my opinion, it would be, council has already passed a ordinance back in 1963 that says the service safety director has exclusive control over the fire department, and the service safety, or the fire chief has exclusive control over his fire department, subject to the rules and regulations of the service safety director. Further, everybody sat at that table with Roy and all of those people, and we, I, I mean, I stopped coming to those, because they were mind-numbingly awful. I, it was bad, like, I don't do public sector law, but that was bad. But we sat there, and we came up with an agreement, and we failed to come to an agreement. So then we spent eight hours, 12 hours here with Susan Fernandez, put all of these issues on the table, she issues her report, your attorney, I think, no, our attorney wrote the contract, everybody signed it. So for three years, in my opinion, that's our contract. Is there ways around that contract? Absolutely. Which would mean we sit down with the administration and bargain again, say, "Okay, this, we need six, so how are we gonna do that? Are we going to put it in there and give and take a little bit on both sides? I don't know." Are we going to come up with, I know that nobody likes volunteers or working one out of every six days for part-time employees that could theoretically be fill-ins at a later date, nobody likes having galleon people come over on that are off days, nobody likes EMTs that are paid at a lower rate and would be solely on the ambulance, I don't know, I don't run firefighters, I don't, those are issues that the chief and the union could discuss, but those are also creative options that plausibly could keep us at six, or even increase to a seven, or an eight. I mean, if you're hiring an EMT, you could run an entire, entire ambulance with an EMT crew, correct?
Yeah. Not to provide against...
Maybe a lower service, be lesser service.
Gotcha. I don't know, but there are issues, there are things that could be discussed. My point is, when we came up and we did the contract and everybody signed it, at that point, we have a valid contract, and so, breaking the contract one way or another creates problematic issues, in my opinion. But I don't do public sector labor law.
What does breaking the contract with the townships do, then?
Yes, so how have we broken the contract with the townships?
We said we would provide, it may not be written, but I'll tell you what, there was a handshake of how many we would have, and I know that's not gonna fly, however...
I, I don't know, I know...
It's a material change. You are breaking the contract with the townships. You can sit there and argue with me all you want, Brian, but it's breaking the contract. It really is.
So, Contract 3 says, "For each alarm originating in the Crawford County West Joint Ambulance City District, the city shall, to the best of its ability, furnish the necessary equipment and manpower to provide emergency medical services through the city manpower and equipment at the same level of services as provided within the city."
Right.
Yeah.
And, what does it say after that?
"The city shall notify the district of any, of any material changes." So, how would it be a material change if we are providing the same services at the same level that we're providing within the city?
Because we're not. We're dropping from six to four. How is that the same?
We're providing six in the city, and we're providing six in the district.
It's a material change.
It's a material change, what they're doing, and they're not given 30 days.
Right, I mean, I don't know.
So that's breaking the contract, Brian. But what's the difference? You're telling us that this would be breaking the contract of the three-year contract, so is that with the townships. They expect us to help them, they're paying for us to be out there and help them, and we go out there frequently, and it's all you hear is, "Thank you, guys, we appreciate you being here, we, I can't believe how quick you got here." Four guys, that changes everything, that is a material change.
Right.
And I know you can sit and legally say this and that, but it is a material change. It is not the same service.
No, but the contract says, we're providing the same service that we provide to them as we provide within the city. That's what the contract is.
Come ride with us a couple days, Brian.
That's what the contract is.
And let me know how you think after you ride with us for a while.
No, I'm not saying any of that, I'm saying what your contract says is, we can't provide a service to the city that we don't provide to the country. It would be at the same levels.
Has to have 30-day notice. You went from six to four with a...
That is a material change.
That's a material change, but not 30-day notice. I think both...
Yeah, I mean, I understand that side of the argument, absolutely.
I mean, I'm just, I guess I'm just rebutting to you, saying, we're not gonna break the contract for the, for us, our three years, then that contract should not be broken for the three years either.
Well, no, yeah, I agree.
But I know you're saying we're providing the service, but it's different, it's not the same service. And the city won't get it either. They're not getting the same service.
Right. I understand absolutely what you're saying, and I agree, I just, I think there's an argument.
I have a motion on the floor. Motion on the floor, so, do I have a second?
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to suspend the council rules, specifically 111.11 and 111.14, to allow for the introduction of legislation without first having the same go through council committee. Vote aye.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Since I asked for this legislation, if I could ask the clerk to pass that to each council member, and if I could ask Mr. Turner, would it be appropriate to have you basically give a quick synopsis of what the change to this is before she reads the caption?
Yeah, so like I said, currently, 135.02 says the service safety director has exclusive control over management and, I don't remember the other word. Management, exclusive control and management of all employees of the fire department, and so, to effectuate what Mr. Myers asked, I changed the end of that, so the service safety director shall have exclusive control and management of all employees of the fire department and may establish rules and regulations to further efficient operation of the department, and then the part that I added, "Save and accept minimum staffing of the fire department shall not be reduced below six members of the collective bargaining unit." And then 135.03, powers of the fire chief, the fire chief shall have exclusive control of the stationing and transfer of all employees of the fire department under the rules and regulations prescribed by the service safety director, and then the new part would be, "Subject to limitations contained in Section 135.02 herein." So basically, just adding that the service safety director would maintain control and management of the fire department, as well as the fire chief would maintain staffing as well as transfers and all of their previously delegated authority, save and accept the minimum staffing would be legislated, not to be reduced between six members of the collective bargaining unit.
Thank you, sir. Mr. President, may I request a first reading by the clerk? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a first, Kevin, a second from Dan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Ordinance number 12-2023, amending and supplementing Section 135.02 and 135.03, entitled Control by Service Safety Director and Powers of the Fire Chief, respectively, under Chapter 135, entitled Fire Department, under Title V, entitled Administration, under Part 1, entitled Administrative Code of the Codified Ordinance of the City of Bussiris in Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept that as the first reading. Second. Okay, I have a first from Kevin, a second from Brenton, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Okay, granting permission for public to speak on said legislation. None? All right. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number...
12-2023.
12-2023, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency? So moved.
Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
No.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 112-2023?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Steve and Brenton.
Steve's first.
Kevin, give it to Kevin. I couldn't tell, we were both about the same time, so Kevin and Brenton.
Myers?
Yes.
Potter?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Spiegel?
No.
Young?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Okay, proposed ordinance number 12-2023 is duly adopted. Okay, I need a motion for, to excuse Jenny Vermillion.
Second.
Okay, I have a first from Aaron, a second from Kevin, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Motion passed, and need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And motion passed, we adjourn at 7:10 P.M. Do I sign this? I don't know.